Good afternoon, everybody. Thank you for being here. And the first thing on our responsibility list this afternoon is a public hearing. And at this time, we'll turn it over to our Assistant Town Manager.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor Holden. Today's public hearing is on the 50-foot lot at the pier. It's a beach access to include a hatteras ramp and walkway. We brought it up in a pre-application that was approved. We were invited to submit a final application. That application is due September 19th, which would be the day before our next board meeting, so it needed to occur at this meeting. It could be included as an agenda item at a public meeting or a public hearing, but we decided that having it as part of a public hearing gave the most opportunity for comment. So that is listed in the application, and that is occurring tonight, and that's what this purpose is.
Okay. Madam Clerk, are we in order for the public to speak?
Yes, sir.
Anyone in the room wish to speak to this matter? If you do, if you raise your hand, I'll recognize you. You can come to the podium and give your name and address and say what's on your mind about this specific item. Anyone want to speak to that? All right. Otherwise, commissioners and staff, is there any reason why we can't conclude this public hearing? All right. The public hearing ended. And for those of you that may not have been to one of our meetings before, the table far cornered back that way, should have a copy of the agenda and other supporting documents about our meeting tonight. Help yourself. And otherwise, we will now begin the regular meeting agenda. And the first item is an invocation. And if we could, let's have a moment of silence and reflection, please. Thank you so much. Second item is the call to order and officially welcome all of you. Thanks again for being here. And next, number three is pledge of allegiance to the flag on my right.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the best of its blessings for all.
Number four, consideration of approving the agenda as presented. Is there a motion or was the motion approved?
I'll second it.
Second discussion, hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. The agenda is approved as presented, and now the consideration of approving the minutes for July 19th, special meeting and regular meeting. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda, I mean, the minutes as written for the July 19th special meeting and the July 19th regular meeting.
All right. Got a second. Any discussion, hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Who say no? They were approved as presented. Number six, public comments on agenda items only. Later on in the meeting, you have an opportunity to talk about whatever you want, but right now, anyone want to speak to an agenda item? I've got one person signed up. Mr. Bauer. Thank you. You don't help, I guess.
Jim Bauer, 329 Ocean Boulevard West. I'd like to talk about the replacement for Rick Smith. Sorry. Excuse me, not Rick Smith. Who is the man that has?
Well, thank you very much, but I think I'll stay.
Okay. That's my one mistake. I'm sorry. It wasn't Rick. Who was it?
Gerald Brown.
Gerald Brown, sorry.
You're having a minute.
Apologies. I do not mean to open a, you know, a hole in the ground for you.
No, sir. Thank you very much.
All right. In the short time we've lived here, we've seen major projects rushed into being, like the pier, the paid parking, the push for the golf carts all over the beach and the carts, the push carts on the beach, with very little public mandate or support. Cooler heads of the commissioners were always asking for clarification, real-world analysis, and as Commissioner Kwiatowski always mentioned, a plan. Now, due to the passing of the commissioner, we need to look critically at the recent actions of the commission itself to win. A pier without purpose, closed to the public, irreparable and an albatross. Paid parking that could best be described as piracy by almost everybody here. At the very, very best, it's runaway mercenary greed, and there's no reason for it. We've opened the door for the sale of things on the beach. When will it end now that the door is open? What if they start selling CBD products on the beach? What if they legalize marijuana? It's ridiculous, and it should have been thought of much better. The golf carts are creating congestion, dangerous conditions, and the other, and recent events on the other islands nearby have shown us it's soon to be something tragic. Today, I saw a golf cart drive through the enormous puddle in front of our house, get splashed by some enormous four-by-four, and the woman was most critical in the golf cart because she was holding her child in a child safety seat, unseat belted, with her hand while she drove with the other. This is ridiculous. What we need is, when we go for a new commissioner, we need to get an educated, thoughtful, and insightful individual, and somebody who understands the value of a plan. This town needs to readdress the above actions and take steps to mitigate these deeds, which can bankrupt a small town like this. And we have to have a plan to deal with upcoming other things that have also not been thought through, like the bike lane. We have to address the bike lane because the bike lane is going to add so much more impermeable surface and make flooding an even worse part of a problem on this small island. We have a jewel here, and we're throwing it away on trinkets. It doesn't make any sense. It doesn't make any sense as a community. It doesn't make any sense economically. It doesn't make any sense, period. And I hope that whoever becomes the newest commissioner can see that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Chief Dixon?
Moving right along, bud, aren't we? So, we've added a few pages to the report this month, which I hope will clarify a few things. The first three pages are just our calls for service that have been there. This month in July, well, this last month in July, we had 695 calls for service, so we were busy. It was hot, and it was humid, so summertime wide open. If you have any questions on those three pages, I will try to answer them. If not, I will move on to the next set. Yes, ma'am?
I see we had four trespass. I'm just wondering, do you know whether those trespass were actually individuals trespassing or were they vehicles left on somebody's property that were reported and, you know, complained about and were trespassed?
I do not know the answer to that, but I do know we have had both types of calls this summer.
Okay.
By speaking with our officers, they have responded to both vehicles that have been left on a property, and then we've also responded to people just trespassing, using pools and things like that.
But vehicles left on property would be reported as trespass?
It'd be trespassing, not parking point.
Okay. That clear? Thank you.
Yes.
Jimmy, I've only got the question, you said these were call for services, and we had 333 special checks for business and residents. Were they called?
It's just, we put a call, anytime we do it, we put a call for service in. It's through our dispatch centers. It's with the integrated system. So when we put a call log in the computer, it lets the dispatch know we're out at a house doing a residence check, or we're out at a business doing a business check, or whatever the situation is.
Are those mainly done at night, or are they done in the daytime?
The vast majority are done at night, yes, sir. We do do residence checks during the day as well. If homeowners are gone on vacation, we have a keep check form that you can fill out, and we keep an eye on your houses as best we can. We do that as well, too.
Thank you, Jimmy.
Yes, sir. So then to the next page here, this part was actually, or next two, this part was a little disturbing for me. This month, or last month in July, we had 17 incident reports that we took, which is unusually high for us, you know, even for the summertime. So we're seeing an uptick in incident reports. There's a lot of misdemeanor larcenies reported in there. So unfortunately, we don't have a lot of leads to go on on that. So you'll notice a lot of them are closed, leads exhausted. So I just want to pass along to all the homeowners and everybody out there listening, lock your coolers down, lock your bicycles down, any little thing that can walk off, make sure it's locked down. So just want to throw that out there. And one case I do want to mention, and give some props to the police department, is we actually had a boat, boat motor trailer, the whole nine yards walk off in July, and that's one of them that's on there. Yes, a gentleman, we suspect it's still under investigation, but backed up to a boat or a trailer hooked up to it, loaded a boat trailer and everything up, and drove off the island. We worked with the Elizabeth Town Police Department and the Hope Mills Police Department, and through a very thorough investigation and a lot of help, we were able to recover that boat. It has been returned to the homeowner. So that's the good news. We're still investigating exactly who took that boat and how involved other people were, so hopefully charges will be coming with that soon. But want to mention that.
Was it locked? Did they cut the lock, or was it locked?
No, unfortunately, this person did not have a lock on their trailer, so if you have a boat trailer, put a lock on it, please. And that's all I've got on those two pages. Questions there?
Looks good, chief.
All right. The next page, or is it two, yep, next two pages, excuse me, are your state citations. Those are reported in there, and you can see they range from speeding to seat belts, allow minor to drive, things like that. And again, as we talked about last month, kind of the way we document it is you've got your time, your daytime, your defendant, and your charges. But I was able to go through those individually and pull some of the numbers out that I hope will help the board as they were requesting. The low-speed vehicle citations that were written out of that was seven, and one of them was for a golf cart, and that's actually one of those that you see for an unregistered motor vehicle. They had a golf cart that was not registered as a low-speed vehicle, as it should have been to operate, so received a citation for that. So eight golf carts style, but seven low-speed vehicles and one golf cart out of those 24 Questions on those?
That was for the whole month of July?
Yep, for the month of July, yes, sir.
Only seven?
Only seven, correct.
Wow, sir. Okay.
And then the ordinance violations for the month of July, we have a total of 15 of those. The way this report prints out is it's got your violations and your warnings on the same report. If you'll notice in that third column, some of them are violations, some of them are warning citations, so the total number of 15. But if you break it down, it's 10 and 5, and of those 10 and 5, 8 of those involve low-speed vehicles, and the rest were not low-speed vehicles. And then last month, the commission asked about the auto-connect citations, and we were able to gather that, and they issued 492 citations for parking stuff. And then, of course, all of ours were parking, all of our ordinance citations were parking regulated as well. But that's what I've got, and if you've got questions, I will do my best to answer them and see what we can come up with.
I'd just like to, Chief, I'd like to commend you guys for putting up the sign at the end of the bridge, trying your best to educate the people as they come over, to be mindful of the North Carolina state laws involving the low-speed vehicles and to keep themselves, as well as their children, safely secure.
That's right. We just, we want everybody to be safe over here.
I do appreciate that very much, but however, it's just, some of these parents just don't get it, sir. There's still quite a few of them out there, and your diligence is appreciated.
Oh, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Tim, chief. I said, "Thank you, chief," but I mean you and your department.
Yeah. Couldn't do it without them.
Building inspections. Mr. Evans?
Good afternoon. First of all, there's a correction there. It's not a total of 148, it's actually a total of 141. That number totals up to 141. It really should be 148, but there's seven of them that got left off in the new construction in the general permitting there. So we just, I just corrected the number, it's 141. As you can see, we're holding steady. We're very busy over in the inspection department. If you take a look, we've got a lot of additions, and we've got quite a few renovations and repairs, but we are turning over just as many new homes as we are issuing certificates of occupancy. The trend now is actually been trending down, but we, just like back when 2008, '09, and '10, Holden Beach always held steady. It was like we never fell off. I'm expecting us to probably go back to pre-COVID permit issuance for new construction probably in the next year or so, but we were still, by average, higher than the county and the surrounding areas. For some reason, because of our, I guess because of our land values and the product we have to offer here, we seem to just hold steady. We are very busy over there. What this report has no way to show you is the number of times we touch these permits, the number of times we re-review permits. We have managed to figure out a way to get the re-reviews of the zoning into this for the next report, but a lot of times, we end up having to touch the paper two and three times before we can get a good, valid application for issuance. Phone calls, we have a lot. We've been dealing here lately with complaints from property owners about work, and we've actually interjected on three different occasions to help solve issues between property owners who are unsatisfied with the construction work and to notify the proper agencies to help assist those folks as well. Right now, the inspection department is fully staffed. We've got two trainees. They're learning. I bragged last month on the trainee hire that we had, how well that person's doing, and the one that we've hired recently at the front desk seems to be just as sharp and doing just as good a job. So we are hopeful that it'll slow down for me and Rhonda, but we are in the midst of training. Eight percent of personnel is being trained while we're trying to get the work done. But that's the report. If anybody's got any questions, I'll be glad to answer.
Jim, I was just, my question was, was the new hires, they look like they're going to stick with us and they're going to be an asset to the department?
Well, it's hard to say at first, but I can tell you that one of them is, she's been with the town for quite a while, and she's doing an excellent job. She's doing a really, really good job. I've trained a lot of inspectors. I've either taught them in classes or actually trained them in the field, and I'm saying this, she might be the brightest that I've ever worked with. She is really, really sharp. And I think the town, if they continue, if we continue to train this person and bring them along, I think the town is going to have a real benefit in the long run because it is important for the small town like this to have someone who's been in the department a long enough. They know where everything's at, and, you know, can rely on history, that they're either learning as they go, or history that's being taught to them from the past. Because you do have two people in that office that have a lot of years of experience, and we're now capable of passing that along. The new permit specialist, she's real brand-new, but so far, from what I can tell so far, I think she's going to do a really good job. She's really good with the public, and pulled it where she's sitting, so.
That was the comment that I had, that whoever's answering the phone or whatever seems to be a very pleasant person in that team. That was something that I think that we had had issues with in the past, and hopefully that's going to change the view.
Well, and we've made that part of the process this time. We were really looking for a person. We always tried to find someone we thought would be best for trying to handle certain things, but in this particular case, I thought it would be better because now we have, this is the missing component, which is what I was talking about before, we have a plan reviewer, permit specialist now on the team. So she's an inspector and a plan reviewer, and once that person gets trained, that job is now taking a tremendous responsibility off of that administrative assistant that was sitting out front that was really overworked. See, that's, she's no longer handling thousands of pieces of paper a week without it being vetted anymore. Now it comes in, it's looked at, it's vetted, it's worked, and then it's given back to her. She don't have to do all that. So we can already see a change. We can already see, we can already see an organizational change as far as how things are being handled, and they're much better. They're what we want to see, what we always hoped to see.
Thank you, Tim. Thanks, sir. Okay, number nine, the vacant seat beside me, previously held by Gerald Brown, who we all miss, and continue to pray for the family. So we certainly recognize his contributions that will carry on for many years, but the town marches on with duties and responsibilities. And Madam Clerk, will you state the way procedures are not necessarily requirements of how we go about the options that commissioners have in filling this seat?
It's actually completely up to the board. We've done it several ways in the past. We've disappointed a new member based on whatever the board thought. We've collected applications. I swear, we've probably done it one more time, but those are the two that come to mind of mine right now. So it's whatever procedure the board would like to follow.
I know, I personally have had a couple of people contact me with interest and inquiring about the responsibilities, and I assume that the commissioners have had conversations or communications with others. We have a lot of talent on Holden Beach, and a lot of people want to do what they can to help Holden Beach, and experience is an important thing, and that's a thing of the past, that the voters of the town, as well as commissioners in filling seats, have looked at the experience of those that are willing to serve. And so it's very important that people volunteer for board of adjustment, planning and zoning, and these other opportunities that are available to the public to fulfill their public obligations and community support as individuals. So with that, I would say that commissioners, let's hear your thoughts, and of course, I don't get to vote on this, but you guys do, and somebody want to say something?
I think that the way we did it last time, where we asked our residents who were interested in filling the seat, to send a CV and a brief write-up of why they want to serve, what they think to bring, what they think they can bring to the board, was a very good way of, as you say, evaluating the talent. I would say that the one thing I would like to see is that we give our residents a full month to make their, make themselves known with their documents, and then we actually have a specific meeting, similar to when we picked a new town attorney, where one by one, we brought them in to talk to them, ahead of, this would mean ahead of the October meeting, so that we make the selection, and then they are seated at the October meeting. If we can do it that way, it gives us a little bit more time for our residents to really think it through and prepare their documents, and then it gives us a little bit more of a structured approach to talking to each one of them.
Pat, I agree with the procedure there. Other than, I think 30 days should be adequate to get, I mean, there's already been some people that have shown interest, and I think within 30 days, we should be able to have anybody that is interested in that, since we're basically announcing it now. We should be able to have those ready and possibly have a special meeting before our next meeting, and allow us to do some interviews, and then we can appoint them at the September meeting instead of waiting on wait-ought.
I'm thinking if we give 30 days and then try to have a special meeting before the September meeting, it becomes very tight. The next meeting, the next town meeting is, what's the date, September what?
19.
19, so that's over 30 days.
Yeah, I know, but, but, yeah, but it gives very, well, it would depend on schedules. Again, I don't want to hurry. I don't want to hurry this. I want to give this, give us time to really think about it and almost do due diligence if we need to on individuals. And I want to give people time to come to us before they apply if they want to as well. So I don't see the, okay, I want to get somebody seated, but I don't see the urgency of September versus October if it gives us time for deliberation.
When they had this last vacancy, if you're on your spot, you did the interviews prior to the regular session. Are you talking about getting applications in for the 30 days and then having interviews at the October meeting?
No, I'm talking about having a special meeting before the October meeting that we basically, the people who are interested, who have applied, we bring them in one by one and ask questions, similar to when we, when we look for town attorneys.
Could we not do that before the September meeting, the same, still? It gives them every bit of 30 days. And then, I think that this seat needs to be filled. And I think that we should be able to give us 30 days as plenty of time. And we have a special meeting or a special meeting before our September meeting, as we did. It was a 30-day program that was put in place when I was lucky enough to get the position for Woody Tyner, and I think that was adequate time, I do believe.
That's what makes the most. I'd like to say one, two things, if I may. We are approaching possibly a hurricane. We are in hurricane season. And whoever that person is that is going to go in this chair, it would seem to me, assuming that we are going to have a hurricane, that it would be good for that person to have the experience of going through a hurricane event and all the process that the town has to go through. If you choose not to do anything until October, or the longer you put it off, the more likely that next hurricane season that we go into, you have a commissioner here that hasn't been through with the experience. Some of us that have been through this for years, you know, we learn something every year, but it is a process that gives benefit to everybody that is involved and gains experience. Another thing that's heavily on my mind, and Mr. Hewitt, I'm going to ask you if there's any urgency of any kind in just a minute, but as well as Doc, you haven't said anything yet, but I would encourage the commissioners to consider moving that timeframe up as far as you can because one of the big issues on my mind is the capital city of Raleigh, and anything that we And anything that we can do to possibly get somebody involved that has connections in Raleigh or connections somewhere with helping us get any kind of benefit from the bureaucracy of the state and federal government, I'm hoping that you can help us find somebody that can do that. Now, the other thing, and then I'll be quiet, but, you know, we had some... Just a few weeks that we solicited anyone that wanted to serve on any of our boards and so forth and offer their services, and we had a pretty good stack of papers from potential volunteers at that time. And I don't know if the commissioners have reviewed that stack of names and the backgrounds of those or not, but it looked to me like there were some pretty strong candidates in I have had some former commissioners tell me that they understand our position, but they have no desire to come back and finish out Gerald's term. But with that, I'll just be quiet. Doc, you got anything you want to say?
Well, if we give thirty days, I guess the week before the next meeting to get applications in or information.
Then I guess I'd like to make the motion then that we get the applications within the next thirty days, and on the eighteenth, we have a special meeting to interview the candidates, and then...
The eighteenth is a Sunday.
The eighteenth will be a Monday before the meeting on Tuesday.
It's a Sunday.
On the nineteenth. What day is our meeting? I think you said it was the nineteenth.
Twenty.
Okay, then we have our special meeting on the nineteenth to do any interviews that evening, and then we could make our decision during the regular scheduled meeting on the twentieth.
Got a motion on the floor. Procedure says, I'm looking for a second.
Can I ask that? How long? What? It's always urgent, and I say this every time. Seems like something gets put in front of us, so... Me just talking about filling my buddy's seat up here is painful to me. I want to think about who's going to sit in. I think thirty days is ample time to get something in. Can we come in prior to or right after the next meeting and make that decision in a special meeting without calling it another day? I know we need somebody sitting up here. I just remember back when I got seated, you come in and you're thrust in making some heavy decisions or situations you don't want to be put in. I think it's relatively calm time right now. Looks like tonight's agenda is a good one to see. So, I'd rather get it done sooner than later. We do it the way we did with Rick. I think that's fair.
I just remember that the last...
Just rather not the special meeting.
Well, a point of order here. We need to have a second.
I don't think we can pick a date until we're allowed to check our calendars.
A second, so we can...
All right, got a second. So, now you can discuss it. And I was going to ask, before the motion, this lady was going to ask Mr. Hewitt if he needed to say in regards to impacting anything we've got ongoing or whatever.
My calendar won't allow me to come to the week before if you consider anything, the thirteenth through the sixteenth. So, not that you need me to pick a board member. Probably one thing that may factor into it is that this is the long session of the General Assembly. It starts January the third, I think. So, that process kicks in soon.
All I'd like to avoid is... I remember when we did interview candidates the last time when we picked Rick, there were a couple of them that seemed uncomfortable. They hadn't realized that they were going to be seated that night and immediately be involved in making decisions. So, I was hoping to give the selected individual the benefit of a little bit of time to prepare himself for a meeting that is, as Brian says, your first meeting is difficult anyway, but if you haven't had time to prepare for it, it can be particularly daunting.
Pat, that's why I wanted to have the special meeting the day before on a Monday, and then that will give them time to prepare it on Tuesday. I mean, it is... Nobody's going to be able to... You know, I don't think thirty days is going to make them any better coming in. It was like I was kind of... When I came in, I had read the documents and had a good idea of what was going to go on at the meeting. And like Brian said, this is painful enough. I think that if we could get it closed, not the sooner the better, but with ample time for input and then interviews if necessary, and then we could, at our meeting, have a candidate selected.
I don't think twenty-four hours is enough time. My first meeting was six hours long. I don't think twenty-four hours is enough time. I think the thirty days, and then we pick a meeting, but I don't think we can pick a date right now until we look at our schedules, but we can go ahead and say thirty days and then call a special meeting after, I think, the September meeting, in my opinion.
Want to change the motion? No, I do not.
Did you second?
I did to discuss it, yes.
Yeah.
Would you read the motion back, Madam Clerk?
Raleigh, it's kind of very long, but...
Can you summarize it maybe?
To get applications within the next thirty days, and on the nineteenth, have a special meeting to do interviews, and then the decision could be made at the next regular scheduled meeting.
That's correct.
All right, everybody understand the motion? Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye. opposed, say no.
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 All right. Three to one defeats the motion. Right, is there another motion?
I move that we allow thirty days for our residents to provide the documents indicating their interest in a seat on the board, and that at our next meeting, the board sets a special meeting to interview the candidates and make the selection in advance of the October meeting.
Sheriff, second.
Second.
Does that mean that they will be selected at the next meeting and then they have the whole month before they're seated?
We'll select them at the special meeting, yes. We will vote after we interview them, similar to what we did when we selected the town attorney.
Yes, ma'am.
And then...
And we'll seat...
And we'll seat them at the October meeting. But the earlier we can have the special meeting to interview, the more advanced time they'll have to be prepared for that October meeting.
More discussion? All in favor, say the motion. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
No opposed, say no.
No.
All right, so I'm a little slow tonight. Would you... What does that mean? Would you tell us what that motion does?
I will collect people's resumes. Is there a certain form that you guys want to use, or am I just...
That's similar to what you used last time.
I think last time we asked everybody for a CV and then a brief write-up of why they want to serve, what they in particular feel they bring to the board.
Okay. So, I will collect those for the next thirty days, and then at the next board meeting, we'll set a special meeting for after that, and at that special meeting, we will interview, select somebody, and then seat them in October.
Which means...
After? We're not doing it before? No? Okay.
Well, we're barely going to have them before the next meeting, so we may as well at our next board meeting, we can set a special meeting. You might like to ask people, since we're going to have a special meeting, if they have dates they aren't available between, you know, until, you know, before the October meeting. That would then help us set a meeting, a special meeting up.
Sounds good. I can do that. Just like we do with everything else, it'll be on social media, it'll be on our newsletter, it'll be on our website.
And this is for residents.
All right, ready to move on? Number ten. Clerk.
At the last meeting, the board decided they wanted to make a speed limit on Ocean Boulevard, thirty-five miles per hour on the whole strip for the whole year, so we prepared an ordinance for you to do that if you would still desire.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance twenty-two nineteen.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, say no.
No.
Three to one. Motion carries. Mr. Hewitt, number eleven.
Yes, sir. In accordance with the board's direction at last month's meeting, we have re-advertised for the statement of qualifications for the Block Q and Pier properties. We've received one response for each one of those. The McGill Associates responded again... I'm sorry, let me back up. McGill submitted their qualifications for both projects, and then Statuar Engineering provided a statement for the HB Pier property only. Those are before you for your consideration.
David, were any of these other firms contacted?
All of them were.
Was that done by the phone, letters, emails?
We emailed them. I emailed them directly.
And you're sure that every one of them received it?
I wouldn't see why they wouldn't. I mean, they were their direct email, so I had a couple of responses back, but I don't know. We had all of their emails and sent them out.
There's a couple that I contacted that they haven't received any information, so I was just wondering exactly how that was done.
It was whatever emails on their website, so if they don't have the right information on there, I guess I have where I sent it to them.
I suppose, this is Brian, in this day and time that... There'll be a day and time, there'll only be one builder to build everybody's home. As a commissioner representing the town, making the best decisions I feel possible, I'm not going to go on one and two responses for these major purchases. McGill, let's say we... There's nothing against McGill. I know Michael Norton very well, I have nothing against him. He has the qualifications to do both of these, but I can't imagine not being able to get at least three on each one. Three different ideas, three separate things that we can look at, three separate things that we can put forward to the public, three separate prices. Unless there's a major hurry again, I'm going to propose that we let this out again and again and again until we get at least three responses. If that takes me going to just have them say no, I don't want to bid it, or handing it to them personally, or introducing myself, then I'll do it. But that's my complete one-hundred percent feeling on the issue. When you got one police officer responding to an incident and that's it, or one bid when you need something done on your home, it's a bad situation. I say it's a bad situation all the way around to only consider one, one and a half in this case. Actually, one in one case and two in the other case. We have two firms on Block Q. We have one firm on the pier. I'm sorry, vice versa. And Block Q is a relatively easy and simple project. It floors me why even a startup engineering firm wouldn't want to bid this and that would not have the qualifications to do at least Block Q. Pier's a little more substantial, but Block Q, I can't believe that none of these people... And I can give you twelve more, but I was told to mind my own business, basically, but I know more engineers than this personally. I'm offering my services to call them if I have to, but I want to see three. That's what I want to see.
You are welcome it. I mean, we asked you guys who you wanted to send them to last time. We sent them to everybody you guys told us to. I can't make them reply, so if you guys want to talk to them, that's... I sent it to them. I don't know what else to say to them.
Okay. Okay. As long as we don't get our hands back doing so.
Somebody help me out here. Everybody said all you want to say, if you have. I'm going to move to the next one.
Yes, sir. Do we need more?
Going to number twelve. Discussion on possible actions on the pier financial reporting. Mr. Hewitt.
Yes, sir. The board had requested to expand the descriptions for the pier properties. In the memo, I outlined four, one, two, three, four, five additional lines that are proposed to expand the expense side of the budget. They are a new line for pier house renovations and repair, pier renovations and repair, four forty-one professional services, which would house engineering, if there's a case, a need for an attorney, a survey, those types of things, four forty-one utilities and insurance, and then four forty-one West Beach access, which is for the lot, the fifty-foot lot on the west side of the pier in anticipation that there'll be a walkway there if there's water, lights, that kind of thing on it. So, those are the ones, after talking with Pat, that seem like they would fit in, based on the discussions that we had last time, and set those forward as the proposed additions to be used whenever the board makes an appropriation in them. So, before I would add these to the chart of accounts, the board needs a thumb up, a thumbs down on them.
You need to make a motion, David.
Yep.
Can I make a motion, the new account descriptions we added to the existing chart of accounts incorporating into the budget ordinance when the board authorizes the expenses?
Looking for a second.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Opposed, say no.
Thank you. I was going to lay down, but...
All right, cheers understanding that it's unanimous, Madam Clerk. Okay, number thirteen, Ms. Ferguson. I hope you have some good news.
I won't know until October if I have good news if the board decides to proceed with this, but the application before you has to be submitted by September nineteenth. Agencies that receive awards will be notified in October, award letters in December, contracts in January is what DCM is saying, but that is on their schedule entirely and could be altered. Just as we did in the pre-application, Tim and I worked on this with input also from the town manager, and it is for the fifty-foot lot for beach access at Pier to include Hatter Shrimp and Walkway. Since the pre-application was presented to you, which had a cost of sixty-three, five thirty-five, the new estimate based on increased cost for construction is sixty-six, nine eighty-five, and those breakdowns are listed on page thirty of the agenda packet and page eight at the bottom of the application. It would be that we requested fifty thousand two hundred and thirty-nine dollars from DCM, and we would match that with our requirement of sixteen, seven forty-six.
Any questions, Commissioner?
I just had one question about the plan for the parking around the handicap access, and I was simply wondering if similar to what we do at the one fourteen OB East access, where it's all handicap parking, can this site also lend itself to being specifically for handicap parking? Is that a possibility?
Yeah, the actual, when I wrote the specifications for the grant, I put in there that we would exceed the ADA requirement, so it would be in, I guess, in, in good faith with what we've proposed to do there. Once we get our RFQs and RFP, and they start designing this thing, because it has to be done that way, I would assume we would also take a hard look at that whole parking lot to determine if it is, at its current state, is meeting or exceeding the ADA requirements. But certainly, we can make as many ADA compliant parking spaces as we would like in that parking lot or on that particular lot itself.
The reason I ask that is it is one of the things that we listed, that two handicap spaces will specifically serve this lot, and paid parking will be associated with six spaces on the lot. And I'm simply suggesting that we propose that, that, you know, we will dedicate the parking on that lot to handicap spaces.
And what I'm saying is if that's what you want to do, it will be in good faith with what we've proposed, as we proposed to exceed the ADA requirements. And we probably may, just to be honest with you, when we evaluate the bargain law, we may have to come up with some more, and that'd be a great place to put them.
I agree, Pat.
Would there be any difficulty changing this to simply reflect that it will be all handicap parking?
Well... It needs to be subject to the final design.
Subject to final design.
We don't need to make a unilateral statement that it's all going to be handicap.
Subject to final design, the intent is it will be...
To maximize.
Right, you will maximize the available parking you have, that you have, because you got to remember, we're going to, we've got to use some of that lot for the ramp itself. And depending on what the grade is that we're working with, we determine the length of that ramp, which we think we've got a good idea, and, well, we know what it is, to be honest with you. So any parking that's left over, we can maximize the ADA compliance with what's there, and that's what I'm saying.
I think based on what I just heard everybody say, the sentence would change to, because they require two, so that's why we started with the two. The sentence would change to two handicap spaces will definitely be provided, and there will be evaluation of the other spaces on the lot to maximize handicap parking.
Yes.
Thank you, Chris. So again, we need to make a motion to move forward with the final application. All right, I'd like to make a motion to approve the twenty-two, twenty-three North Carolina Public Beach and Water Access Program Final Application, and the town manager and execute the paperwork and have it submitted.
Anybody want to second that motion?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It's unanimously passed, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Ms. Ferguson.
Thank you, Chris.
Public comments on anything you want to talk about. Anyone in the room wanting to be recognized, come forward and speak in the microphone, give us your name and where you live, and talk about whatever you want to talk about, good or bad or indifferent. Are we all awake?
Jim Bauer, again, three twenty-nine Ocean Boulevard West. Just as we continue with the planning of the beachfront property, I think it's imperative to remember about the emergency access for ambulances and fire vehicles. It's something that we have now. I've heard different things from different people about what is actually the ownership of who's using the public access, but we need to be able to roll emergency vehicles onto the beach for both, basically for medical emergencies and things of that nature. We have now, the Holden Beach Fire Department, TriBeach, as well as the Police Department needs access to it. It's not, it's not a want, it's a need. So I would hope that as we plan this out, we think about that, and that is, if not, it should be at least a priority of the planning council as they go forward. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else want to speak about any subject on the agenda or off?
I'm Rick McIntyre, one twenty-two Cricket. I share Commissioner Murdoch's frustration with getting people to bid on these big projects. In my experience, sometimes engineers and firms don't bid because they're too busy, and they've got plenty of work and they don't need to get into something. Sometimes they don't bid because they don't fully understand exactly what they're going, what they're going to be getting into and scope of the project. All I would say is to make sure that your specifications, make sure that your details of what you want accomplished are very clear, and that's going to encourage more of these folks to take serious consideration in the work that is at hand to be done. That's my own comment. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Going once, twice, three times, Town Manager Hewitt?
Yes, sir. As of last week, reporting on the FEMA Storm Damage Repair Project's finances, as of last week, we've received all but forty-five thousand dollars in cost directly related to the project. That's ninety-nine point nine percent of the twenty-three million dollars back from FEMA, not counting the interest costs, which are still undetermined. The audit, and it just dawns on me, Pat, that you're the audit chair, and I should probably, but I'll say it, but please add to it, the date, there were no issues of note in the report to the Audit Committee the last part of July. We're still on the schedule for the thirty-first of October submission to the Local Government Commission. And as Tim alluded to earlier, he's brought on board the inspections permit specialist, and we also have filled a vacant public works technician position. That's all I have.
Any questions from the commission?
Now, we're still, with this legislative report, we still have a chance of getting the House Appropriations Committee to include the interest be paid.
We're still working on it.
Does that look like that's favorable, David, or is that something that's...
We believe that it is an allowable expense. We can't find anybody to answer that yet.
We haven't gotten a note yet.
Better than a...
Yes, sir. Number sixteen, Mayor's comments. Needless to say, I'm sure everyone in the room and those that are listening recognize that we are in hurricane season, and so far, it's been pretty good for us. But it's time to remind everybody to get prepared. And in doing so, the town of Holden Beach staff, we had a meeting this week, was it this week or last week?
Yesterday.
Yesterday. Geez. I tell you, I've been in class all day and haven't had a break since early this morning, so I'm a little slow tonight, slower than normal slow. But anyway, we had a meeting and it went well. It was a hundred percent attendance of the staff that have responsibilities in regards to emergencies, and we're on top of things. We will be meeting again before we, if we see a hurricane coming, we will be meeting again. And as we stay prepared year-round, it's always even better in hurricane season to double up on reviewing what we need to do to meet the needs of everyone in an emergency situation. So along those lines, the rental companies, every year, I try to meet with the representatives of each of the rental property management companies that represent properties on Holden Beach. And we will be sometime in the next thirty days, probably more like two weeks or so, meet and review the town's plans and communicate to those companies any questions and answers that need to be exchanged back and forth, just to review with them what the town will be doing during an emergency. One point of interest, moving along from the emergency meetings, I want to make everyone aware that the Holden Beach Causeway continues to be a location that's getting a lot of attention. And of course, everyone knows that Holden Beach Causeway is not part of the town of Holden Beach, it is a part of Brunswick County, and all the rules and regulations pertaining to the Holden Beach Causeway come from the Brunswick County Commissioners. In addition to understanding that, everyone needs to know that property owners involved with the Holden Beach Causeway have had a recent meeting and have met with DOT in looking at opportunities and so forth about what could be done to beautify the Causeway. A simple thing that I'm trying to get the public to understand is that I know that I get a lot of complaints about the appearance of the Causeway, and I'm simply trying to remind everybody that there is an ongoing effort from the business owners and concerned citizens involved in the Causeway. They've met with the proper authorities that govern those right-of-way and so forth, so we look forward to them continuing to work and hopefully give us some good news. I know, Mr. Hewitt, I believe there was a forty thousand dollar grant that was made available to be used for planning and considering alternatives of how to improve the Causeway, so we're looking forward to see what kind of results come out of that. That's the good news.
May I add to that? That forty thousand grant, dollar grant, is not the town's grant.
We have nothing to do with it. We did not receive it and have nothing to do with it, no responsibility, no involvement. Just said that loud and clear. Is the Beacon Man still here? He got that, okay. Lastly, as most of you know, I try to keep an eye on the beachfront for various reasons in my mayoral position, and something has come to my attention more so lately than in the previous couple of summers, but every year, we have more dogs on the beach. We all know that. And overall, the owners, I think, are doing a good job picking up the waste and controlling their dogs. But we have a few people that are smarter than people like me, and they have figured out that they can take a long rope, fifty or a hundred feet long, and wrap it around their arm, you know, like you wind up an extension cord or something, and hold rover up close. When they see the patrol people coming, they'll wind that thing around their arm, and then when the patrol comes by, or whoever's in the four-wheelers out there, the dog is up, you know, five or six or eight, ten feet away from them, and everything looks great, and you ride on by and you look in the mirror, you turn around and look, that dog's fifty or seventy-five feet from that owner, running and jumping and having a big time, because now the owner has let all that rope off his arm. So the dog is technically on a leash, that he's pretty much running free and chasing tennis balls in the ocean. This past weekend, I saw that happen, and there was a lady leaned over, picking up shells, and about sixty or seventy feet east of her, the owner was standing in ankle-deep water, and he turned the dog loose, letting the rope go off his arm, ran over there, and that dog blindly to the lady, she didn't see the dog, couldn't see the dog coming, and right before the dog got to the lady, the man was able to jerk the rope back and get the dog off the lady. Summary of what I'm trying to say is that ordinance, Mr. Evans, whenever your people look at ordinances, I know the ordinance says that the dog is supposed to be under the control of the owner, but I don't think the intent of the ordinance is to have a limitless length leash. Some of the wind-up, or the kind that go out and hit a button, it winds them back in, that kind of thing, some of those things are getting to be pretty long. The owners, I think, overall are doing a great job, but we do have some that are trying to take advantage, being smart, and trying to defeat what I believe is the intent of the rule. And I personally saw this happen this past weekend, and there was a big dog, about an eighty-five to a hundred-pound dog, big black furry dog, and that lady was older than me, apparently, and I know she wasn't thirty-nine, but she looked older than me. So I think we need to give that some attention, because that could have been a bad event right there, and I do see more and more of it as time goes on. No offense to any dog owners, I love dogs, and I've had a mini of them myself. I've had fourteen puppies and thirteen lives, believe it or not, but, so I love dogs, and I know you do too, Doc, but I've taken too much time talking about the dogs. Mr. Rick?
Thank you, Mr. Baker. Again, as Brian said earlier, it's still tough to be up here without Gerald here with us, and I just, my intent this evening, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to be negative, but was to try to get that field as soon as we could, so there won't be that empty chair. It looks like the sun is slowing down. I know my, some of my grandkids already started back in college, and even the younger ones are in, that are in high school and stuff, have already started sports, and you can tell that by the number of people coming over the bridge on Saturday and Sunday. It looks like it's slowing down a little bit. It hasn't stopped by any means, and I don't anticipate it just slamming on brakes, but it looks like it's starting to slow down a little bit. Our concerts, Christianity and your staff, it's amazing. There's a good group every time, everybody's happy, as Alan said a couple of meetings ago, the number of kids and stuff up and dancing and smiling. It really is a happy time on Sunday evenings at Holden Beach. It, it really is a, a happy time on Sunday evenings at Holden Beach. Again, as the Mayor alluded to, the emergency management meeting we had yesterday, it was the first one as Mayor Pro Tim, and as I guess, part of that job as the Assistant Emergency Management Person. It was really, it was really fulfilling to me to see how well-prepared, I guess, due to previous storms, previous activities, that our staff is, ready to take care of the, the parts of getting ready for a storm, what we do when a storm actually appears, and how we react and take care of things afterwards. So, we've got a, we've got a good plan, the emergency management plan is a good plan. We've got good staff that are ready to do it. There was a very, very few changes we needed to make in it, but I was really, really happy to be part of it, and again, it's been through some storm last year, but this year is, we had, in fact, I was told my job was to keep hurricanes away, so I'm going to do my best to see if I can do that. I hope I don't get fired if we have one. But the only other thing is, again, my, my favorite subject, the low-speed vehicles. Again, it's, I know the guys can't be everywhere, and, and it's, but even today, a rainy Tuesday, I saw more than the seven infractions ride right by my house, and the only one that really scared me was the baby in the lap of the dog, and the rest of the golf cart was empty, but, excuse me, low-speed vehicles empty. But again, I commend you for the, the sign coming in. I don't know what it's going to take. I wish I had a crystal ball, and I know you do too, as what would be the magic potion to, to get these people to, to abide by the laws of North Carolina and keep these kids restrained properly. And in fact, one of them today, I was running 35, and it was leaving me. So, they evidently figured out how to hop up these low-speed vehicles, so I don't know if it's gear ratio, tire size, or what, but they're moving along. Other than that, our staff does a great job, and I'm looking forward to giving a replacement for Brother Gerald. Thank you.
Brian?
As always, I want to thank everybody for coming out, and if Gerald was here, he'd say, "Bo, don't talk up that snake." We all know what he's talking about, so, the concerts, I'm going to pile on to that. I'm privileged to sit right across the water from them on every Sunday, and there's always a good crowd there. I think it's an excellent event, and very well-done, and very good turnout, so it's really, really good to see everybody coming together and enjoying themselves on Sundays. Thanks to all the staff, your continued hard work. To anybody out there that's listening now that I can, we've got a couple of projects here at Holden Beach to, to take some serious consideration on if it's, if, I don't know the procedure exactly, but maybe we could break this down into sections, guys, and get a little broader group of people to, to try to help us out here. I, I really am, just like you said, very frustrated with not, the appearance of no one wanting to work over here. Other than that, I think we've had a, a great summer, surprisingly uneventful, and that's, that's a good thing. Everybody seems to enjoy herself out on the beach, and every time we're out there, it looks, I don't see anything with smiles. That's it.
Doc?
As much as we hate to fill this empty seat over here, we hate to see it happens, we got to keep things moving, so I encourage people that have experience or want to get involved to get their information in, so we can go ahead and start looking at the, the people that would like to fill the spot and, and make a decision, as tough as it is. But, you know, it's important to keep the town moving. I want to appreciate this, everything the staff has done. It's been a couple, last few weeks have been pretty humid and hot. I know firefighters, police officers wearing all that equipment. I'm, I'm hot in my job, and I'm not wearing as much as they are, and it's been tough. July was busy and hot, so I appreciate everything. The first responders and our regular staff did, keeping the town looking nice, keeping it safe, really appreciate that. I want to reiterate, the mayor, hurricane season, don't forget, when getting ready for your hurricanes, don't forget the flooding. Unfortunately, that's been a problem recently, even with king tides. Just remember what you can pick up. It becomes projectile in the water, ends up in the canals, the marshes. Try to keep those clean. Even with just high water with the king tides and stuff, there's a lot of things that are floating in the canal, and I got to get, try to keep everything clean. Thank you.
Ms. Pat?
Happy to see everybody out here. I'll just add a couple comments on the audit. As David said, the Audit Committee did meet with the external auditor. The external auditor was extremely complimentary about the quality of the information that they were giving, the fact that they had completed the single-point audit that has to do with the large amount of money for the FEMA reimbursement project, and that there were no findings on that, so that is, that is a really good thing, because that's a complicated bit of accounting and a lot of money, a lot more money than we usually handle. They expect to have the audit completed by the deadline, the submission deadline is the end of October, and we should be getting information about the overall findings of the audit, although they're not expecting anything serious at this point. We should be getting that information before the end of October, and the Audit Committee will prepare a statement of their opinion on the audit for the Board for the November meeting. Otherwise, it is, it is hard to believe summer is almost over. Summer season, high season, is almost over. It's been a fairly calm and quiet summer as far as I have seen and heard, and I hope we have many more after this that go as smoothly as this one has.
Is there a motion adjourned?
I'd like to make a motion adjourned, Mr. Mayor.
Do you second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. We're adjourned. Thank you very much.